Alright, we have a forum here that's low at five thirty, we're gonna get started, so we're gonna ask you everything. It will be worth for everyone to start. If I was to see my operations, I would probably come first, I'll tell you thank you. I'm gonna thank everyone today, not tonight. I'll ask you just to be with the board and make the decision, that's for the city. I was gonna ask you just to watch over us and y'all to make sure tonight, I'll be the best man we can find. I'll ask you if you're talking to yourself now. Okay, that's from the key, whoever's asking, who's going? Yeah, y'all first.
Right, stand up.
Yes, ma'am, you stand where you want.
Okay, well, how's everyone doing this evening?
Good, alright.
Um, so my name is McCarrick Gibson, supervisor here at the work with Liberty National Commission. Um, and back, while back when I spoke with Mayor Tim, found out that he worked there for, was it ten years?
Yep.
And so he a Liberty National Legend. Uh, but I know the selection made it well, how's y'all dressed though? I'm okay, I'm alright.
Some of them are very lovely.
I understand, but I do wanna be respectful of you guys' time, so I'll be brief with this. Um, we already got our seeders and everything we needed to get the city approved. All we need is enrollment date and the date and time to come in and start the enrollment process.
What you mean by seeders?
Uh, when we came and talked, we sat down, me and my other associate Ben, and we got those documents on the DocuSign side.
I don't think, I mean, I don't, I'm over that.
If you need us to be, you can pull up.
No, no, everything's signed.
Oh, it was you?
Oh, with the board, they'll have to prove that I wouldn't wear us there.
Yes, sir. Um, I know that when we issued the, that he said that you had to talk to the board.
Yeah.
Uh, would they have to sign, you gotta give the signs with you?
I think they'll have to vote for it tonight. You'll have to vote, like, to look at what it is you're offering.
They'll look at what you're offering.
Yeah.
I understand. Uh, if you need to, we can just give you about the presentation.
Yeah.
Of all that we offer. So just to people with credibility as well, like, we've served the American workforce for over one hundred and twenty years. Um, all of our products that we offer, and basically we offer life insurance and supplemental health in a fixed way. All of our products are permanent and affordable, meaning that if any point where you quit fire, quit, quit fire or retire, then you take those benefits with you and the benefits, and the decrease or those premiums are gonna increase as well. Um, we provide our group term life, that's unlike any other life insurance company, uh, it's group, it's group term life all the way up until the age of one hundred. And what's unique about it is you have the option to pay that off at sixty-five, so you're looking at keeping that coverage all the way until age of one hundred without making any more payments after sixty-five. We have our cancer endurance plan, and what that does is a scheduled benefit plan for all the employees, um, in the event. Uh, it has no lifetime maximum as well, meaning that no matter how many times that cancer comes, we still cover that. Um, and that one is until age of one hundred as well. Then we have our critical illness protector as well, that in the event that any employee were to ever suffer from heart attacks, stroke, major organ transplant, uh, total loss of eyesight, anything like that that's considered a critical illness, we cover them from any amount that they may choose though. Uh, we also have our accident protected max, uh, and that one's at a flat rate. And that's twenty-four hour coverage for the entire family on and off the job. And they can use our quick claims process to easily get their claim filed through and get their benefit paid out to them. Um, and our work is we would just come in, meet with each of the employees, um, and I know you guys do have a lot of employees, so we can come in on different days, um, sit down with the employees, complete the needs analysis, and they tell us what coverage they want and what they don't want, and we go from there.
Yeah, if y'all ain't broke sure, you can leave.
Yes, sir. Yes, I can leave.
That's what they made the book in, yeah. Cause I was enrolled until June.
Okay.
So, uh, where's y'all office?
We're located in Memphis.
Memphis?
Yes, sir.
I believe it's from broke sure.
I believe it's still right here.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Hello, Sees.
Hey.
Around here, so, okay, so we, we have some in Tennessee, in Arkansas, like, ones in Arkansas would be, like, Forest City, um, West Memphis, and West Helena in Tennessee, we have Galway, we're on board with Shelby County, and also for Mississippi, we have, like, Greenwood, Perdita, and several local offices as well here there. We also do bigger school systems as well out in, like, Sunflower County, LaFlore, and Coffeyville as well. And then, like, around this area, that's where we go.
I believe it's from broke sure. We'll pack it up like a box probably.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I appreciate y'all.
Thank y'all, thank y'all for coming.
Thank y'all.
Alright, Department one, we did a survey. Thank you for, we just got a few items tonight, same deal. Uh, first two items with the communication system. Uh, first one is if we lump these two together, that'd be fine. Uh, first one's apple and gin engineering, seventy-five thousand, forty-five dollars, fifty-nine and ten, and that's for, uh, designing, construction administration services from pass on. And then, uh, pay attention to earning utility services for four hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars and forty-seven cents.
That was what we'll say to Kevin Dale. Any questions or discussion, are in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, or if you're curious?
Mayor, so today we opened up, uh, what's called Hickory Flat O-two design area. That's a five hundred from Hickory Flat, all running back to landfill road over here. Uh, with that area coming live, that means every single house in Union County, you know, our footprint, you know, we got the, you got the Northeast project, the Todd Bigby project in Tipolac, they got customers in our booth, now every house in Union County has got multi-gig data service in there. So that's, you know, that's gonna be a big deal for us for the future.
And when you, when y'all have been asked this several times, the substitution will be, what's a target data?
So we're waiting on the, you know, we got the, the GRIT grant, we got awarded, and, uh, we got a word that through, TBA got the grant, and they're negotiating with the Department of Energy. I think we're waiting on Eli, let go of the money.
Okay.
That's what it's going down to. They, they gotta make sure those grants are gonna make, I, I, we kinda going through that process with them, getting information, and they're feeding it up. So we think it's gonna be okay, we have not gotten green light, but those grants are gonna, if they don't, then, you know, we'll take another route and get it finished. Once we do get it green lighted, the, the long lead idol or the transformer, those things take a couple of years to get, it'll probably take about three years over the time we get the thought to it there. Um, I don't know, period of pay request on our, uh, the gas, uh, major replacement project we have, I don't know, website. It is to southeastern, uh, pipeline environmental services, just for stored material and, uh, the part of the project they completed, um, prior to last week, amount of the, uh, pay request is six hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred thirty-nine dollars and six cents, and this is paid entirely from grant grant.
From the key, that was second, but Drew, any other questions or discussion, are in favor?
Aye.
Any problem, once I'm curious.
And I guess speaking of Elon, we did get word this week that the, uh, got a word of seven point two million dollar grant on the second part of this, this, uh, this major replacement, we did get word that that, that money was released and wherever we get to move forward, that part of the car.
Really?
Happy to get that. Uh, I don't know, before, um, kinda, I wanted to update you on the, uh, electric vehicle charging station. Uh, y'all get the approval to sign that contract pending Reagan review, and there were some commercial terms we had to get, uh, finished in that contract, and it took about five or six months to get it, to get ready to get that fixed to, to, to soon as all, but we got that signed, uh, actually yesterday. So the charging station will be coming, it'll probably take, you know, through the summer to get it in. Uh, we already had to have a change order, uh, to, to make the terms that we, we negotiated, like, to get all those back into contract. Uh, we'll have that ready in a couple of weeks, but we did, we're ready to get the contract signed, so, and again, that, that's a TBA grant. TBA pays eighty percent, and then part of the electric era, one of their partners is gonna pay the other twenty percent, so we're just gonna be at a little bit of a tavey on the parking lot, uh, I think about seven thousand dollars all the way to the outside. Uh, the last time I had layers, uh, advertising for a twenty-five hundred KDA patent out transformer, uh, this is to, uh, uh, accommodate the, the, it's going into the, the lumber, the build that's going in out there for the touring building. Uh, that's, that's a transformer they need, we have one on the yard, we have to order one to replace it, and it costs an excess of seventy-five thousand, so we can advertise it.
Something positive, but we're gonna have second, Drew, any other questions or discussion, are in favor?
Aye.
Any problem?
Okay. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
If y'all wanna roll out, you can. If y'all, if y'all wanna stay, you're welcome to, it's an open meeting, but y'all don't feel obligated to, to stay.
Alright, alright.
Okay. I didn't want y'all to think that you had to.
Uh, you need to settle one. You do it. You stand, we got there much as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Please, Department.
I guess, Mr. Murmone, I guess my, with the Department mission too, Chase. Last year this time, uh, you know, we had a, as soon as Department mission, a little league started, we had these, had a car, a couple of car break-ins. Then we, I can't get over it, it's, this happened a little bit, it came, we authorized neither, two Sky Cop trailers to buy visual security for four flexes and the tennis court side. Well, Chase called and said it's about time for, I think a little league starts in May one.
May fifth.
May fifth. May fifth. And we, we, last year we ran it through, May, uh, first of May, through Ju, like July one. So the total amount of rough, was about, almost like a thousand dollars for two trucks, and that was the rent to pay both of them. So the gas war comes, and I started looking at it, and I got thinking, well, you know, if we're leased home, two trailers, patrol, if we ball, might buy them outright, it's one hundred dollars, fifty thousand dollars. So I thought, well, that's a lot of money, but I don't know necessarily renting them and throwing money, I don't call throwing money away, money that we keep, considered as investment necessarily. So I contacted ASI, and I, I met with Thomas, and I talked to him, he actually talked several times. He basically provided overall cameras for the, the main parking lots of both the tennis court side and the, uh, sports flex side, a little, two LPR cameras, three LPR cameras in each entrance to catch tags that are going out. Uh, so that, total price for that on both sides is forty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. So, and basically the, the, uh, the sports flex side is thirty-one thousand and forty dollars, and the tennis court side is fifteen thousand dollars. Basically put the cameras up, and then later they're talking about four point two three thousand dollar maintenance fee to keep them up going year round. So my guess, what I'm asking the board tonight is, or what the recommendation will be, my thoughts are, if we're gonna spend this much money, I don't know, I could outright come up with something, that purely leads from ASI seventeen thousand, for three years, is seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and seven minutes, for three years. At which point we would own the camera system and then just pay a yearly maintenance fee for them to keep, keep them up.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is that, the seventeen a year if we're doing, you know, over the three years, does that include the maintenance fee and then just pick it up then?
The maintenance fee, except it added to it, but that, that's separate, cause we, I said, well, let me get this explained to the board, and see which way they'd like.
Fourteen six thousand for the cameras.
Yeah, basically, with the camera system.
Three thousand a year for maintenance?
Yes. Like, if that camera system you're talking about the second is not mobile, it's something that would be solely for Department, so, and I'll walk, I'll walk. So we're talking about, uh, this is where you come in, this sports flex off of, Johnson. Uh, this is the new entrance here, probably LPR camera here, LPR camera here, and then, but you get the lot gas, walk those poles, and camera here, camera here, camera here, camera here, camera here, getting overall, we can see.
All the same si, posts have the same system?
Yes.
We add on to it?
That's right.
Cause like with our, Department on the river, also, we could, in theory, add cameras on the same system.
That's right, uh, this is where you come in this sports flex, standing right here, LPR camera here, LPR camera here, when you run, overall here, 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 here.
Call it, I know we had more issues at the tennis center.
No, it wasn't necessary. We, we made, we made this cut some this day. Uh, I told him, you know, I told him, take him some numbers together today, uh, we talked last week, just wish I had today, this, we, we'll talk about this, and then we'll trip down with the LPR cameras.
Hey, we're here.
But that qualify for drug task force? I said, well, that's hard to play with a camera left, but I don't know if I can last a lot every year. If we're not, we're not getting money, we used to, with, with, there's values you can take, with serving agents and some of the other. But the, the mobile units that we used last week, Sky Cop.
Did they work?
Yes, they were. They were, so, now we had one, we had one, our bird, on, on the tennis court side, after that, we were able to identify the people, fortunately, the people were reading, it was right under the false name, but we didn't were able to track that much, so.
So how difficult is it to move, uh, around?
You have to go try, they're, they're fully autonomous, already not autonomous, they're fully independent, after all.
My point, my point I'm making is, is if we put something up, this, there, stationary, and we could, the mobile unit moving, if we wanted it to be now handled for an event.
Yeah, now, like I said, I agree with that, that is.
But I mean, from a cost standpoint.
I always try to figure out, like, biggest money worth of, but to, if you wanna use those two for any city event, it's as simple as looking into a truck, we go out and pull that, deploy, outriggers, run it, it's got a tire, what you run it up, I think it's twenty, almost twenty-five, twenty-something.
How much worth of plates on that? Hold a little month.
On that?
The Sky Cop as well, eleven, eleven thousand, take a third, like twenty-five hundred dollars a piece in mind, something like that. One thousand three hundred, three hundred.
Alright, so they said we had an option too. Two trailers, two years, monthly amount is four thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty cents.
Is that for a year, right?
Yeah, that's, that's for two, that's, that's about, about at least a home type thing.
Oh, at least a home.
Yeah.
That's maybe.
And it's got on the back page too.
Yeah, that's what I agree.
Yeah.
I will say that the public, they really like this Sky Cop, and, uh, in our draft last week, we had a bunch of people asking if they're gonna do that. But what we did last year for eleven thousand dollars was two months in three.
The wells made in July.
In January, July.
Cause if you match the season clothes, kind, we can cover kind of stage for three weeks.
At least a home, fifty thousand a year, some rest, I thought was shit.
For two years.
We're getting more coverage with the Sky Cops?
The advantage of the Sky Cop is that, just like Drew said, we can literally, like, if you have a vet now, say now, or where, we can put a good truck, and they come, they come with one overall broad spread camera, and they come with one LPR camera.
Does the maintenance, is there a maintenance cost on there?
I don't know if they share the maintenance part of it.
Do you have any idea how long these things last, you know, my dear, stupid question, but.
Well.
We're gonna.
There, there was, yeah, we would have, my, my advice on that, they would, would, they'd, uh, the latest thing was also, I don't think they're sitting there.
Do we have it in the budget to get them, this year with the Sky Cop, like, the free market? Yeah.
I hate it, then, like, my, my, I guess the overall point I'm trying to make, we're supposed to split it much, but I like to have some, pay toward, pay toward us, the city owner.
Well, we gotta have something to get us in the outfield. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, if we, we'll make them look at doing, just like we did last year for, for this baseball, baseball season, and then know, and going into the coming budget year, look to include, you know, from a purchase standpoint. If we laid the purchase files, that won't be entire, these are four thousand, one forty-four hundred.
The balance, if we're, if we're going to double that out, I would suggest us go ahead and start the lease deal, cause it's, you know, that's four, it's, uh, twelve thousand dollars. And I paid eleven last, you know, it's, it'll be eleven just for those three months. From there about.
Well, I guess, can we get our drug task force to pay it from out of?
I could probably this year.
This, if it went where, four months, that would, that'd probably be a turn.
Five, five, do I do that for those three, three months, and try to get into a situation where, when it's full, or something like that, I think you can, like, it's.
Yeah, yes.
Twenty-four months, six percent interest rate, monthly, the monthly payment of four thousand, two hundred thirty dollars per year. So it's been almost thirteen thousand dollars.
For three months, you know, I wonder. If we determine it at the tennis courts, knowing that we've got this huge project on the other department, that we can add additional cameras to for that side. But what about the camera system that's already at the tennis complex, could there be some cameras, not necessarily tag reader cameras, but?
Yeah, they could add cameras, what Thomas told me about that, they tried to get both of, out there and look for cameras. Thomas told me they set those cameras in several years ago. I don't know exactly when, I don't know if those added to them, or what, what they all, cause I, he said this is bigger, the figure he included at fifteen thousand dollars would be the update, and putting you can put up there, and then, and a piece you could add on. I don't know, I, I guess I haven't asked you for a question, but I'll, it really depends which, which way I wanna go with.
I agree with Boris. I can't, I can't believe it's the whole best option. Man, I don't know, we just pay rent all over here. The past two years, forty, four thousand?
Yeah, like I said, I paid for three months, I had a task force, what, what will happen after that?
We'll have to get the, I mean, we used to budget it in September, so what would that make in eighteen, about August, September? Five months.
Three months?
Five.
Four one thousand, one hundred and two thousand.
Always in drug task force. Continue putting something in there.
Well, I said, it's, it works a way, it works, this is all on all the cases, but it's just like, the, the cat, what we're working on now with Miss Donna, to make sure the cages get served, is that we're gonna start trying to serve our cages, you know, so there's, make sure we, we get all that done.
How many break-ins have been reported over the past couple of years, I mean, I know we passed them, we had a big one last summer, it seems like, it's just pretty big, that's got twenty-one thousand, you know?
Alright, so, here's what I'd say, is that every year, around this sports flex, we start having them mass, and you see a couple thousand vehicles out there, well, most crimes are crimes of, of opportunity, and people running up and down I-22, you know, and that, people who do it whip in, pop windows, and are gone.
That's how wrong sports flex is.
Yeah, well, we've had them happen on both, last year, we didn't have any on the sports flex side, we had them on the, uh, tennis, tennis side. But we've had them happen on both sides, but.
Do you know, Chase?
Have any idea?
Have any?
Yeah, in the last three years.
The thing that I like about the, the Sky Cop is, there's a big blue light on it. It's, it's a, it's a presence, you know, it's a deterrent, just having that presence.
Well, the, my thing is that you get a lot of kids and running out there, and somebody could live on I-22 and snatch kids, since we got playgrounds, we got splash pads, you know, they could be out of there before you know it, and with the tag readers, and that, like, you know, Drew said, a big blue light, and maybe that's a deterrent. The public, I can tell you from experience, the public feels safer living there.
The other problem is just we got a new entrance. I said, each one of those trailers has a, a general broad spectral camera, and each one LPR camera, and so there'll be one entrance, so we won't be able to cover, if we just have two trailers, or have two on one side, which leads to the tennis court, exposed.
We got till, uh, May, till games start, so we got a month to decide something. I would think that we could get tag readers put on every entrance and exit, do it ourselves, instead of purchasing this Sky Cop, putting up poles, and then getting Thomas to get quotes on, on that, and then Bill's help putting up possibly our own, you know, blue lights to maximize.
What I, what I would submit to, to the board, well, just going on what you said, is whatever money we spend, I would, I would see, I would ask the board, spend on something we don't own.
I agree, I think.
It's not like we're gonna stop needing it in the future.
So it just depends on what capability you want, whether you wanna fix the asset, and pay yearly, you know, on that particular property, or you want, or you wanna split it up, you might wanna buy one trailer and one, you know, so wherever that, I would, so let's try to, try to spend money and own it.
I agree, I definitely agree with that.
So.
Especially in fifteen years.
What, what is the board, what we're gonna do is, go get, or get, get, work, work the, work the ASI cameras now?
That's where I, that way you have some, you're not leasing it, and you have, I, I, I like the Sky Cop, but it's not worth the money, it's just for a few months. There's been a whole, there's been a whole lot of downtime, just sitting out there, it's pricey basically.
It, it is, and, you know, the, the only positive I say there is any other, you know, city event we have, we can afford, but you're right, it's like real, a lot of money.
Uh, yeah, save and get us some, more, more, better models than Thomas.
Uh, so, we'll cut down, basically just down to three LPR cameras right now, or?
I think that's more than we can say how much, was this original, they didn't have LPR cameras, or is it just view in the parking lots?
No, I, I told him, I said, look, he had it, he had it, I told, this is what I told him, I said, we need a general overview of parking lots, and we need, I need a LPR camera in every entrance. And I said, we have to, I, we'd buy a blue light, stick it up there, fuck the switch.
Yeah, I thought you had it. Well, one thing, I was, well, I think we get better response if someone wrong.
Yeah, I think, I, well, one thing that I was, I think we get better response with the top one, wrong, if you're gonna do it.
Right, yeah. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor?
Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alright, alright, Ray.
Jay, you got anything?
What's up?
Third of all, Mike.
We're good.
Great, Mark, we can only have one thing, uh, way that garbage truck go down. And Johnny took it to, to get the price fixed and put it on B around. It's gotta have some Trunia bushes, they go on the frame, I said the frame is made of two, it's a seventy, seven model, was that right? I think. So, that's ten thousand, ten to twelve, and then if a motor goes out, I think, well, that's fifteen or more, so. I think he got our money's worth. Yeah, yeah, he like says, you buy one, I mean. Uh, just one of them, you know, you. And so we'd like to give some, make some, we got the money in solid ways.
Right.
Your solid ways, yeah, that's the way you're gonna find it. It's gonna be a little over two hundred thousand. And, uh, but, the money's in solid ways.
It's hard to get another.
If we get another.
We get everybody.
That's right. So we just need a permission to make emergency purpose and we'll come back this month and give you exactly my hours.
Yeah.
So we have money, we will have a say, see if we can get any other questions, if it's, I don't know if they're.
I, if I'm, if I care.
Building's big.
I submitted my mother a report, uh, zoning may, we had a request from, she had, this is how you say it, two oh five South Central, far over here. Door's set back there, it was a break.
So, yeah.
Look at that cherry tree right there.
We're gonna swing it to the end.
Alright.
Alright, uh. Nothing on the updated agenda. Unless y'all seen anything, you seen agenda, you want? Correct, we'll move on to actions, then. Stone children saying, oh, fast, fast forward, it's not a little year. Last game contract update, let's see.
That's what y'all talked about, uh, the last contract wars.
Oh, the cemetery.
Yeah.
Oh, in the trees.
Yeah, he raised his praise, um, and added to, that's so true.
He raised his praise, but.
Well, I see, but considerably less than he pledged to us.
Yeah.
So he really kind of raised his praise at all, just because.
And the only thing I said now, that we normally are having historic, you know, means we have to do that. If, if we were having, cemetery one over on drive with three minutes, but he's had it three or four years, that's five percent increase. We usually level habits for three, four, five years, cause that, you've got the value, where just somebody gets a bid.
So lots of charge, start all over and put up in our duties as for no, if it's contract, just the cost, um, the cost increase, that's the problem. Uh, actually, uh, I'm ready, I'm just gonna say, yeah. I make a question that we do a renewal, the cost increase.
Okay, you have a question, that key, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Same, I follow, is there any other questions or discussion?
So this, with it being a cost increase, not a, or a renewal, recovery far from, uh? We're not required to budget anyway, um, government service contract. But, uh, we typically do that, thought we're here, once you're, you're really not seeing the whole of the bid here, we're just gonna adjusting that for a minute.
Everybody satisfied with the word, it's a negligible increase compared to, yeah, general costs, uh, inflation.
Alright, any other questions or discussions? Call it clear?
I, Dave O, I was curious.
Uh, is McCord gonna be your service freedom? Somebody else. She just says. Oh, that, she wants to get her annual service contract for three hundred dollars per month, complicated. Well, computer taken out, computer taken out. That's in the code, well, I guess the great, the, uh, service contract. You know exactly what we're talking about. That's pretty valuable, that is like a maintenance contract, huh? Yes, I know, it's a maintenance contract. What's the name of the, that's computer taken out. I started with that from some. That's basically the scary aspect, and then make sure the fire, you know, firewalls, the whole, uh. Yeah, but we have to.
Is it okay?
We have, do with it. Well, this, this is, this is gonna, your technology is gonna be able to put your things, actually keep ours, the heaters moving. What y'all think?
Thank you, Bruce.
Uh, well, most of all, I, I appreciate that, say, my, he, he has questions or discussions, I would say.
Hi.
If those, I'm curious. Out of the, as far as property discussion, uh, something I've told everybody, across the Stokes, you know, that count, uh, it's like a, what did we figure up here, one more four, I mean, here, one more four acres?
I think somewhere there.
A acre and a half, they will donate to the city. But I don't know, I don't know, did you ever talk to him?
And then, Bill, are you familiar with what they're talking about, they're saying sewer line, right there, I've seen it there, there's several manholes. It's really. Used to be a moat, but we do have that sewer line.
It all stops up occasionally.
After the whole. I, I tell my, yeah, I always tell them, I don't know. As soon as trying to clean up their mother's estate, and they, I guess they can go wheel those, man, they will do. Way say that. Oh. I don't know, it won't cost us anything, then we figure out, what do you, what's that? It won't really cost us anything, uh, to have, I hope, not pay that. All the day, we're bringing, if there's something in that one, the liability, and that increase, everybody, the city owns it, so. All the thing we got on is secret, we haven't really taken that, we already maintained that. We have a warehouse, driveway, uh, there's probably an easement, yeah, yeah. Where are we going?
He's just putting the driver back, it's not that whole.
Yeah.
Hours, what are getting. Yeah, it's just, you know, but, well, again, it's one side and the other. So it's just, that's a accident, you have basically that part off. So, I said, this if you do, except for, I don't care, you know, um, we have some previous ones. And, and it was an attorney and then he drives those digs himself and you have had all these, uh, right, the burgers, that they can go back to his family in the future, and I would say that this one should not have anything like that because we don't want to definite, uh, rights to go on generations and generations. Uh, so I would ask that approval by approval, the deed be part of it, so.
Don't think about it, I'll look tonight, I told him, I would talk to you all night, and, uh, that's what I told him, he's thinking about it, for them, I, I'm guessing everybody's had a chance to look at it, if not, if you've seen it, probably. Just don't realize it. Now the corner property there belongs to somebody, it's corner power, I'm thinking about that, small wood. Bill, small wood.
That was when we actually, I'd love to clear out.
So don't go with tax law, uh, don't make it up.
I mean, uh, doesn't seem that's gonna hurt anything that, or if it ever does become a nuisance, if it, it grows up too much, we can just go in, cut it out, have a lot of letters applied, or that, it might be in advance, just thinking off the top of my head. On the other hand, doesn't seem to have much potential for development, said we used to. But, for, for maintaining a sewer line anyway, or if it hurts, but, take it.
Let's go look at it.
Yeah, I know. Don't do that, go look at it.
Let's go look at it.
Alright, well. The next thing on the agenda is consider executive session for personnel, depending on that other thing that we hold back.
Oh, yeah, we got a cherry tree.
Legal, right, your legal advice first. Okay, we got two things to execute. Legal advice and personnel, please. Oh, we'll take up the legal advice first, if y'all, like most, consider executive session.